Staff report, I'm going to get two reflections. If you have some general comments, I'll give them to you all and then we'll dive into the work. So that's how we see this rolling out. Any questions on that? Okay. Mr. Brown.
So we've boiled this down to 70 slides of decision points. No, I really wanted to do something on April Fool's Day last Monday, but... No, 20, 20. And so, but actually Attorney Lindsey went through the entire meeting last, from last year, and then, or discussion a couple of months ago, he boiled down these decision points and really I just took his decision points and put them into slides for, to facilitate this discussion. So, and after we put the packet out, I know I sent a questionnaire to the neighborhood associations about mailboxes and I forwarded the response to you over the weekend. So our recommendation has changed based on that feedback from them, that it's, it wouldn't be a heavy burden on us. And so, and so anyway, that's, that's where we're at and we, like I said, we've tried to boil it down by the issues that were unresolved as of last time we met.
Okay. I'd like, I do want to point out that this visit has produced a expense guidelines for neighborhood associations, so that's in the packet. So that's really helpful to have as a guiding document for how does both of reimbursements, so thank you for the work to produce that and fillable forms, which will make this a lot easier for neighborhood associations. That's the idea, is to make that process simpler. So before we dive into the decision points and kind of the conversations, I'd love to hear from the neighborhood association just some addition, some opening thoughts and then we'll dive into the document itself. I'll start with our birthday honoree. Ms. Cuss.
I don't really have anything at this moment. I'll pass it after I'm done.
Okay.
Just, just thank you for having this meeting and it seems like we can go across these points fairly quickly. I think it's been done well, so I see this moving along pretty good tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Tisher.
Yeah, so I was a little anxious about all of this and all the paperwork and reading over it, but then when I found this document on the website this afternoon, I was very pleased with how this was very nicely laid out and easy to be able to then go through and highlight items for questions tonight. So I appreciated your doing this and I'm sure Ben and Wes, I'm sure had a lot to do with it too. So, great job making it more friendly.
Thank you. Mr. Sangster.
As kind of the old timer here, because I, Mary Ann and I both were involved with neighborhood associations back in the 90s and then helping Ken start Southeast and then starting Northwest. This, this dialogue, this document has been extremely needed and well updated and makes my board and myself feel more capable and needed within the city. So it's kind of a big thank you and I hope, and I hope the rest of the chairs agree that we want to keep this a living document, not like the old one that just sat on the shelf. Thank you.
For a quarter century, I would point out. I think we're agreed that moving forward to have ongoing conversations and at some point I do have a note to myself that putting into the resolution that we will have an annual gathering of the council and the neighborhood associations as we did last year and now this year. I think it's a very important conversation.
She says a quarter century, that makes sense. I know when they look at 1983, that doesn't seem not long ago.
Well, I was only 15.
All right, moving on because we all get caught with that. Yeah, yeah. My desk is on fire. All right. Let's start with one of those high level questions, which is something that's come up and is basically what is a neighborhood association and what rules pertain to it, don't pertain to it? So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Brown. Mr. Lindsey, talk us through this part about what is a neighborhood association, is it a public body, et cetera? So I'll turn over to Mr. Lindsey.
And so it's kind of important to note that under Oregon Public Meetings Law, if you are deemed to be a governing body or a public body, and really the question is whether or not we want them to be, it's really more a governing body and that you guys are a public body and a governing body is, is one that basically has the power to vote as a quorum to give you guys recommendations. And we as staff would point out that if you, if you actually set up a situation where there are advisory committees that actually meet as quorums and have the power to vote to make recommendations, what you do is you, you sign them up for public meetings law and public records laws. And I, I think the long and the short of it for legally speaking is if you have neighborhood associations that have, say, a board of three, that means a quorum would be two. And that means people could never come together and talk about their neighborhood issues without having a public meeting. And that would be kind of an absurd outcome. Not the, I mean, I guess then you'd have to be really careful about who you would choose on your board if you were going to be a governing body, because you couldn't talk to your neighbors unless you have that monthly meeting or whatever it is. So, or, or hold a special meeting. And then you have the problem with serial meetings, which is you couldn't talk to one neighbor even if you had a slightly bigger board and then those other neighbors talking about their neighborhood. Because you guys follow these rules and you know them and we make sure that you know them. But, but the closer you are and the more neighborly you are, the more you can run a file of public meetings law if you make, if, if they were a governing body.
Well, in fact, putting that into the perspective of the function of a neighborhood association, it is for neighbors to associate, to come together, to talk about things of common interest. And I, to your point, they have a very different function and role and flavor than an elected governing body, which is what a council is. So any questions or comments on this? Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I was just thinking about situations where, you know, a neighborhood association might advise the council, but in, in practice, they've always gone through the various committees, for instance, the traffic changes. That went through the committees and the committees recommended that to us. It wasn't a direct policy advice.
Well, they can have input all they want.
Yeah.
It's, it's different, when you set them up as an actual, like officially, you know, advising body that can vote on that recommendation and make it official to you guys, that's kind of the distinction under law. So if they all get together and they vote, and you guys have kind of sanctioned that as a, we are going to take this advice from that as a whole and make it official, that's, that's kind of the distinction. And so I would say you should stray from that because what it does is it sets them up to basically have much stricter rules and, and much more requirements as far as keeping minutes and noticing to the public and all of that sort of thing.
Olive? Yes, thank you. And that was my point, is that if they do have a, something that they would like to advise the council on, there are already avenues established that they could do that. And so that was my point, is that we didn't need them to be that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I would add that the, their span of concern could be, is much broader than the city. We would include school districts, their county, their special districts, fire districts. They could be, as I said, some of you do invite those to speak. I think what I've, the impression I've had is that our recognition is based on if, if you're going to operate in these ways, then you're, as you as a council are saying, we will have one of our council members come and, and be with you at your meetings and also considering for funding.
So does that make sense to everybody at this point, council? And feedback from our neighborhood associations? Does that make sense?
The only thing that I have, you know, I want to keep reinforcing, is that we appreciate the ability to have our minutes posted on the city website. Our, our group has it on our own. And that we can invite the wider public. And that when we do set up meetings, we announce them for all the public. And we have, do want to keep in mind that we have to be a meeting accessible for our meetings and such. And that we just can't pull a fast meeting. We have to give a little bit of time to be able to post it.
I think that really gets into the considerations we'll discuss under Section 5, which are the requirements that we have for neighborhood associations. So to be a neighborhood association, we have expectations that go with that and that's where I think the, those get expressed. So if there are ways that we need to make updates, and we're going to be discussing some of those as we get into Section 5 and the bylaws and responsibilities, that's where I think that comes in. So we can make this collectively what we need it to be for the neighborhood associations to be as effective as possible and to be able to include as broadly as possible. So I think that's what that comes in. Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the other positive way of looking at this too, beyond just being an association that's more nimble, is that people in their own neighborhoods might want to set something up that isn't exactly like the other neighborhoods. And then you guys, it's up to you to just recognize, okay, that's a neighborhood association. But you're not top-down saying, these are all the rules you have to follow in terms of like their inner workings, so their bylaws and such. They can choose slightly different ones that kind of work for them. And, and that allows them, also you're not then appointing all of their members, they're appointing each other, which makes it more of a grassroots sort of thing. So there are benefits to, to this as well, obviously.
Okay. So we're good there? Let's go on then into the document itself. Section 1 and 2. And this is a language change that was discussed last year to change all references from citizens to residents. So that will be a, a change in the language throughout the document. All good there? Is there anything else in Sections 1 or 2 that anyone wanted to bring up? I didn't have anything, but I want to open it up to anybody who had comments on Sections 1 and 2. And for folks who are following along, Section 1 is the purpose and Section 2 is the neighborhood association and it's pretty much about the boundaries. Or what they do. Okay. And this is a billboard ordinance, which does make it a little bit more onerous. We're looking at keeping this as an ordinance, correct, Mr. Lindsey, rather than changing to a resolution?
Um, yes.
I had it in my head as a resolution, but ordinances can't be amended. Okay, going on then to Section 3. Brown?
So Section 3 was recognition that most of the stuff we do by email is by email. There, if it was a public body, then you might be hard to do snail mail. But a lot of the communication we do now is by email. So the proposal in Section 3 is just to change mail with email for subsections A, B, and C. And staff, your reason for that?
Okay. Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there a typical standard on the length of time that you mail the information out that's in this section? For example, if you say you mail it out 10 days before a meeting and you mail it on a Friday, I'm assuming you're counting that as one day and then you have, and this can go for email. I'm just, is there a timeframe that you're going to give them a heads up? And are you mailing it? Or, because I know that the city does mail things, notifications, which, so if you do what you're talking about here, you're going to change everything from mail to email?
Right.
To the neighborhood associations? Is that going to go for, I'm just curious, are we only doing that for neighborhood associations? Or are you going to do that for all business from the city when it goes up to notifications or invitations to participate in meetings?
This is just for neighborhood associations, but we do utilize email too, but there's a lot of requirements where we still have to use mail as a public entity, which is, I guess, goes back to that broader question of, we don't want to force them to have to be a public entity, so use that. But email would presumably be faster if we do the same day, they're going to get it a day or two ahead of time.
So are we, I probably have some follow-ups. So are you, I mean, I think when I look at this, I would think that it would be, again, if you're going to adhere to a 10-day notification of an important, I don't know, public hearing at a city council meeting, is that really enough time to give notification to the neighborhood associations that something's coming up for a public hearing?
Well, that's a thoughtful question. And if we change that to email, there's automatically going to be a, an efficiency there. But should it be more than that?
I mean, I could think it would be more than that for anybody who's getting invited to a public hearing or giving notice to anybody that might want to come and testify. But for a neighborhood association that has to get a group of people together to ask their neighborhoods, how are they going to do that if you're sticking to your 10-day notice?
Yeah, and this is a minimum, those are minimum notices, but if we wanted to increase those...
How often do we exceed our minimum notices?
I think it just depends on, on when the, sometimes calendaring is hard with various meetings. There's a push and a pull with the 10 days and, and the pull is that there's a 120-day rule for getting land use decisions from cradle to grave. And so there is numerous meetings that sometimes transpire within that period. So it, it is, like anything else, a compromise to say, we're going to give people this much notice in order to come to these meetings. And that's just one example. I mean, other, other examples are we just make sure and publish ahead of regular meetings, but people know with the regularity of meetings, but they don't always know what the agenda is until we publish it. And so, and then clearly we can't give it more than working days notice in a way, because we're waiting between meetings, the next meeting's two weeks from then. So, I mean, there is sort of a reality to the calendar as well. But I mean, we, I think we can always try to be more mindful and get more notice, but I think a lot of times it's, it's hard to do so, just by the inherent nature of the speed with which we have to operate within certain realms.
Are you looking at me or first, because he had his hand up? All right, I was going to go from you to Mr. Sangster. Mr. Sangster.
Like you as a council, representing people in the city of Kaiser, our board represents the neighborhood association. So we have gotten zoning issues from, from planning via email. And the first one, we disseminated within ourselves of the seven people on our board to get input, to give feedback to planning. So we don't generally wait till the next general meeting, the following month, because we are, we are elected within our group. And we, there's seven of us in a broad area. So that's why we've been working. The only comment I can make is one of the zoning things that was sent to us, I think they forgot us, and it was almost too late to make a comment. So we need to be upfront when everything goes out. Email is, for us at Northwest, is the easiest way. Because I can, I and the other officers can disseminate it quick, we can put a time limit on the feedback and get it. So that's Northwest, guys.
Ms. Rich? I'm a little confused. Are we saying that the associations need to notify the membership of the agendas for the commissions, the boards, and city council meetings? Because we don't do that. We, we always put out on our email that every, all the members get that they can sign up with the city to get, receive the agendas. So, so otherwise that's kind of a burden to notify. But we do on our monthly meetings, you know, let them know when the date is and they can go to meetings, they can call and get signed up. So, yeah, but, yeah, just for regular...
No, I think the expectation on C is that the neighborhood associations are on the notification list that we run for all of the meetings that come out. I mean, I get all of the meeting notifications with the agendas and so forth, you do too. And to tell people how to self-advocate, we're signing up for the one or ones that they want, I think is really powerful.
Right. Otherwise it's a lot of stuff, you know, a lot of people that don't, another email.
Well, that's what this visit does and Ms. Wilson, is that they manage that so that if automatic goes out to those lists and it's becoming more automated, so that people can sign up and get the ones that they want and not get the ones that really not interested in.
Right, so timing is an issue, because she sounds about when it's supposed to be.
But I think, right, but I think the one that we're hearing, the question on, if I heard it correctly, is ones on the agendas on which there are public hearings for planning, zoning, and subdivisions within the boundaries. And to Mr. Sangster's point, that would do as a planning commission. So if I'm hearing correctly, and correct me if I don't get it right, Council President Starr, is that the notification process for the neighborhood associations for projects that have planning, zoning subdivision would start at the planning commission level. So all of the, all of those agendas need to go to the neighborhood associations and make sure that that happens.
Can I?
Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you. The, this section also now is colored by, at the very beginning, the city manager said that the P.O. boxes may or may not be an issue because we, it's so rare that, that mail goes to the neighborhood associations. This is actually one of those areas where we do, we would mail them quite a bit. And so you could choose to, to highlight just an area like land use, to still do both snail mail and email, which would be, you know, easy enough. But what, if they opt for mail at City Hall, then we would be mailing that snail mail to ourselves. And then, and then we would be emailing them, reminding them to come pick up their snail mail. So at a certain point, you know, we, I think what we're trying to do is figure out what works best, we're trying to get hold of them.
In that timely fashion. That's the impression I got wrong, so, Council President Starr.
Well, so here's my example. The towing issue, right? We mailed that out on a Friday afternoon. We counted Friday as day one of the 10-day notification. There were two weekends within that mailing period, which now we're down, 10 minus one, which is Friday, counting Friday, that's nine, four days, which is a weekend. So now you're down to five. If the person's not in the office, but maybe on a Tuesday and a Thursday, now you're missing a Monday. So now, I mean, when you start, when you look at a 10-day notification, and this is where I want to make sure, because it's not just a business, like you're mailing something to somebody within a neighborhood association. They might be on vacation, they could be out of town, they could be, there could be any number of issues. And so my ask is that if we are mailing things to people, and then we're talking about neighborhood associations tonight, but I'm asking kind of in a more general term, but for tonight specific, if you're mailing and you're meeting the 10-day minimum, let's think ahead for people and we have a little higher level of customer service and not just do the 10-day minimum notification. When you start taking into consideration that people might be gone, people, you know, maybe it is a P.O. box and they only get to the P.O. box on a Tuesday and a Thursday. You start, do you see where I'm going with that? I want us to not just operate at the bare minimum requirement, because that's not taken into consideration, serving our, our residents at an excellent level of customer service. And I know excellence is one of our values.
Councilor Colton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I suggest that we make that a 10-business-day notice rather than a 10-day notice and that should satisfy that requirement fully and make it more usable for some of those people. Now, with the neighborhood associations on, I remember we're going to be mailing to them very often, but for some of the businesses that...
Are in the neighborhood.
That, that might be a modification.
So if we could perhaps put a pin a little bit on that one, but to look at the associations in general, and we're going to get to this a little later on when we talk to Section 5 and 6 about the board members, so that it doesn't go to just one person, but we will have the email contact for all of the boards. So we, to send the notifications to the entire board, so again, it doesn't get caught in one person's mailbox, but the entire board receives it. So if seven people on Northwest boards, a couple of them are not available, answered the emails, the other five are. So you have duplication and then communication across the board. Mr. Sangster.
We have set up one, an email that goes to all of our board members.
Okay. So y'all get the same one? Have all of you done that? Okay. So I'm getting a yes, no, yes, no. However you set it up, we're not, it's not our call, you make sure your entire board gets it. Fair enough? And then you get the notifications so that then you can proceed. Okay, anything further on Section 3? All right, let's go on to Section 4. Which is pretty much an introduction to Section 5. Says we're going to have a process for recognition. Yes, we are.
So, Madam Mayor?
Did we skip a bunch? Oh, we did. Nevermind, back to Section 3. And, oh, sorry.
So this was an add to subsection, subsection E, to say, it already reads, recognize the association as having standing in land use cases within its boundaries or within adjacent areas where there's direct impact. And add to that, when input from the affected neighborhood association is received by the city...
is received by the city ahead of or during any hearing moment.
And this is important because?
Well, so, standing is an interesting relationship to any land use decision. And if, in order to avail yourself of standing, usually, you have to have either come in and testified, or given some sort of statement. And what that does is that not only allows you to be heard before the original decision is made, which is important, it builds the record for that argument to be in place. Because you could come in and have standing, but if you've never made any arguments, it's really confusing, legally speaking, that now you want to appeal what exactly? So, I think it's important that people know that if they want to have standing, they need to come in and actually make that argument ahead of time. And then, of course, from the city side, fairness to us, we wouldn't want people to just show up who never even said anything, and suddenly, they are sitting us. So, that's why that's there.
And this is pretty standard for achieving standing in land use cases. Any questions on that amendment? Mr. Sengster.
I just want to emphasize, historically, neighborhood associations never got anything till they posted a sign in the neighborhood. And I know it's kind of this, sending that kind of information to the neighborhood association well before the decision is relatively new at Kaiser. I know our, the Northwest, we were able to get one for some housing development and stuff way ahead of time, so we were able, as a board, to talk about it. But we got one here recently, and it was kind of right after the decision was made. And it was like, whoa, it's already made, so what do we do? So, timing for us, and again, email is quite appropriate for our neighborhood association, but the timing, we need to have it upfront. And that is new for all of us, including the planning department.
Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you. I mean, the ease with which we're giving the standing just means too, if you were to simply reply to the email when you get it, you know, with pure input, then that would give you standing.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, we're not trying to make it more bonus. We're just trying to make it more in relation to--
Several of our members are here, so that's good for them.
Okay.
Here.
Okay. Yes, I'm gonna ask again, is there anybody here who is on the board for, can speak for Southeast? Ms. Bush, come on down. I saw you down here. It's working. Yes, totally, totally get it. Thank you for joining in. Okay, so, we're good with that change for Section 3? Okay.
How soon can we get those notifications?
Well, whenever, whenever things happen, we'll get them ahead of what is happening. Is that what, that's what you're saying? Yeah, we don't--
Well, because I know not everybody gets them. I know they accept several, because I attend all the planning meetings. And I've got a list of the upcoming things for my community, but not everybody has that.
Okay, well, I guess it probably depends on the level of the planning. But it, I mean, I will not only pass the message on to our planning department, but you should be getting notifications for all of the land use that goes on in your neighborhood. Are you aware of that, Mr. Sengster?
Yes, thank you.
No, I think there's just certain criteria that many neighborhood associations are notified. If it's just a partition, we don't get notified. Somebody just simply-- So, can we talk to Shane about this?
Well, we got one where there was some subdividing and stuff. We got notification via email from planning about this, whether or not we wanted to give input, and they were gonna be putting in a small portion of apartments. And then, we got one for the signage at the rec. And that's the kind of stuff we want to hear about ahead of time, so our board can, you know, any new housing, changes on the streets that might affect us, things like that.
So, I'm gonna go to Councilor Duran.
So, what I'm hearing is, like, for some land use and some signage, it's like the 200, 200 feet from the property, everybody gets notified for some things. Maybe the association can get notified for anything inside that building, which is what you're going through. So, that would just need to be a blanket, anything that happens in your association, whether it's, you know, somebody would get notified, you want to get notified. That makes kind of sense. I think that's what's kind of clarification.
That's perfect. Thank you. I'm gonna go to Ashley, Ms. Tisha, and then Ms. Bush.
Well, I just, I just, the question's saying, we, our association email, got the land use for that subdivision. And so, there must be something that we're triggered on some email for that. But then, the signage for the rec, we didn't get. So, I guess--
It sounds like we're--
It was, but also the subdivision was outside our area also. But I got an email about that. So, I guess, I used to get a lot more emails to our neighborhood association email, but I know then, like, when the website, so maybe I haven't, like, re-signed up for some, because I knew when the website changed, I think that's maybe the timeframe when I lost connection with some emails. So, I guess I need to maybe get with you or whoever to get, make sure we're signed up. But like I said, that 91 we did get, but it wasn't our neighborhood. And I just thought, oh, okay, we're getting, but then, we didn't get others, so.
Yeah.
So, it's just kind of a hit and miss on what we get.
We don't want it to be hit and miss. And I really appreciate Councilor Duran's fix on this. If a 200-foot notice goes out, the neighborhood association which that notice occurs goes to the neighborhood association as well. That would, that would solve the problem. For you that are being caught unaware, like, I didn't know about it, that's-- We don't like that, when there's something going on, and we find out through Facebook that, oh, by the way, something went down. Doesn't happen anymore, but it did quite a bit. And the problem notification, that system we have now has really changed that. I'm gonna go to Ms. Bush, and then I'll go to Councilor Aspen and Councilor Reed.
Thank you. Call me which, Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, is this on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, my question is, say we do all get that information, and then we're supposed to make some kind of a decision and get it back to you. Do we need to be convening just our boards for that decision? Can we do it via email consensus? How should you do that process? What is ethical?
Well, it's here on a public body. So, your board can communicate via email where we can't. But if you're going to have standing, that would be something for each neighborhood association to look at in your structure, on how you are going to convene and do decision-making. And that should be in your bylaws. I'm sorry, and then, Councilor Aspen, and then, Councilor Reed.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is very pedantic, but I would nevertheless appreciate your, and Councilor Duran's opinion on this. With the 200-foot buffer of notification around a land use or similar planning action, we have plenty of properties that are potentially up for development that would, you know, straddle the line of a neighborhood association or be very close. So, I did want to clarify whether a neighborhood association that fell within the 200-foot buffer would receive that notification. Okay, as opposed to just where the property exists. Okay. Totally, okay.
If it straddles, both of them get notified.
And frankly, that's, more information equals better than, as far as I'm concerned. So, I'm in total alignment here. I just wanted that spelled out for the record. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Councilor Reed, and then, yes.
Okay, so, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm just thinking that it's Section 3B that can be just specified to include this idea of the 200 feet, or it seems that that would be the place to do that specifying, because it's already a broad statement of an action being taken impacting property or the citizens within the association boundary. Just that would be the place for it.
Yep, that would be good.
I will make sure and incorporate what you're saying into that section when it comes back in front of you for decision-making.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. And then, to solve our year with Northwest. We're flexible here.
I'm just suggesting, personally, the city for staff, and the most anyone objects, why can't we all receive all of them? Because I'd be interested to know what's happening elsewhere in the city, because our members may come to us with questions, and then we can speak with some sort of knowledge. So, can you do that?
I'm thinking, yes, and with standing. That the standing issue where you have for land use, if it's not an affected neighborhood association, how do we feel about that? So, if Northwest is commenting on a project in Northeast?
Well, I'm not suggesting we have the option to comment, just to give us the information. And the only one who's allowed to comment would be what has happened.
Can we narrow it that way? I don't know that--
Well, if anybody wants to come in and come to a public hearing and testify, they can get it.
Yeah.
So, it's okay for them to come in. If they feel strongly about it, not to testify.
Done.
Yeah, or, or, right, in a safe manner.
So, will that, I'm gonna focus a little bit, because I remember getting an email once from Ms. Kuns about, why am I getting a notification on some of that when it's not my neighborhood? So, will that create confusion? Our expectations of the neighborhood associations to get all of them?
I don't think so. I think it will be more of us to do exactly what Timmy said, not our questions.
Done. Any objection on the part of council? Mr. Brown.
Well, just want to make sure we're on the same page. We're talking about land use actions. We're not talking about every time a building permit--
Correct.
By right, building permit is issued.
Correct. We're talking about that actually as action. Because issuing building permits has all of your current coalesces, and if somebody is going through a planning commission, and is coming to council for a decision, if it's, though, I'd like to know when building permits are issued, because when somebody asks us being built on this lot, I'd like to know. But that is different than, there's, we're not gonna be commenting on that, because it is not up for a hearing. Did I get, capture that correctly? Oh, Ms. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, in that notice, I'm probably getting too far in the weeds with details, but if it's about an issue that's not in our neighborhood, the land use, and they could be just realizing this neighborhood association is allowed to comment, rest is for information kind of thing. Does that make sense?
It does, but, right, Mr. Lindsey, y'all can comment, because it is open for anybody in the community.
Yeah, one other caveat on that. Is there a timing that's in that notice as well? Here it is, it needs to be done by such and such.
Yes. Mr. Lindsey, those notices do come out with requirements for when things should be turned in for other planning commissioners or city councils. Is that correct?
I'm actually not sure. I will need to make sure that we'll have those, that information in there. And I'll speak with, with, as Brown's blessing, the planning record.
Right.
Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, they do come with, yeah, I'm getting head nods from everybody who's done these, including my neighborhood. You're said, you're told, there's gonna be hearing on property X regarding Y, and the public hearing will be held at planning commissioner or city council on this date. So, that's all in there, and you can bring it up under public comment, or public, a comment during a public hearing can happen right up to the time of the hearing itself. So, there's not a requirement for advanced notification. Now, if you do send it in, in writing, we all love that.
What I will say is, for the bigger notices, the public notices that we put out, they certainly have language that have the dates on them. I'm just not aware, when you get down into the, you know, smaller ones, whether the type of emails that are being sent, so I couldn't give you a super affirmative. But we're hopeful to have helpful information for folks.
And so, if anything that does have a time, time thing on it, it'll be in there. Okay.
Does this mean that we would get, like, Kaiser Station, if there's a project going on there, almost would get that information?
If it's, if it's a project that requires action on the part of the commission and council. If somebody's putting a new store in, and they're just pulling a permit, no. We don't get those either. Although, yeah, we'd like to know, because we want the chamber to have been-- Okay. We good there? Fabulous. Thank you. Anything else on Section 3? G? Okay, there we go. The new ad, neighborhood association applies for and obtains the least costly-- Oh, this is on the P.O. box thing.
Yeah, so, we would, I would go with the previous recommendation I had that. We do not have a problem if we want to have one in that box at City Hall. And I, they communicated to me, they said, one to two a year, is what they get. So, if you want a box, we will have one. If you just assume and keep it, and you're coming to whoever's point of address, that is, that's, it's two of the council's pleasures.
Okay. Council, any opinions on this?
Would you like to keep it in as an option?
Could you elaborate, Mr. Lindsey?
Well, so, this is really just an add-on, and it's just more of an allowable expense, so that you know it would be paid for if you, if you wouldn't got it. And so, it was just an attempt to allow for folks to know what, something that was going to be received as a, as a mobile expense.
Can we then rewrite it as this is an allowable or reversible expense?
Madam Mayor, may I follow up?
Yeah, Councilor husband?
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Lindsey, you said something earlier that I wanted to make explicit, but is there, is there anything, as it stands now, that the city is required to mail out to the neighborhood associations?
Um, yeah, well, in accordance with this ordinance, we're supposed to mail out anything that affects property or people in those. So, yeah, we have, we have to mail them. But then, if they sign up in advance, or like any other citizen, if they sign up in advance, if they want certain notices, then we do send those out as well. If that helps.
Got it, okay. Thank you, just, that was--
So, we can, I mean, any citizen could do the same thing, and ask for certain notifications, and we would send them every time.
Reading comprehension error on my part, but good to know, because I remembered you said that mailing to ourselves, which we would be legally required to do, so.
Well, and here's the, here's the issue there is, we would then have to do either a follow-up email or a follow-up phone call to say, there's something, you know, there's a hot potato here that has a timeliness issue to it. So, that was just, I guess, being a little ironic.
Nevertheless, it's a form of legal issue. Thank you for bringing your attention.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'm gonna go to Ms. Tisha, and then, Councilor Coler.
Thank you very much. So, I'm just wondering, then, when we've replaced mail with email, should we have, like, either or or and? Because it sounds like there's items sometimes that would be mailed, but then there's also things that would be appropriate as an email. So, should we, because we were going to be replacing mail with email, but so should we have an either or and or? Bye.
Well, that's, I mean, I guess that is, the question is whether or not we wanted to lean into a relationship with email, or whether we wanted to remain both, or snail mail.
If I suggest, I'll go to Councilor Coler and then, Mr. Sengster, is that, that the email, unless required, to be written mail?
By statute.
By statute or ordinance or whatever, where a written notification has been sent. Otherwise, the, it would be email. Yeah. Because that's something we can actually track. We can see that it was received, we can see that it was opened, you can put return receipt, all that good stuff that we do for anybody, especially if there's a notification. So that's actually more secure for both parties. So that might be the tips. And a little more people, that's true too. Yeah, it wouldn't be just the, yeah. So the email would go to everyone you designate in your board, however you have it set up. And then from the city point of view, we send it to you all and it goes to your board where you have designed. And then we're not, we're making it easier for you all to do your job. Mr. Sangster and then Councilor Culler.
I'm following up on your comment. I would prefer from Northwest Kaiser to remain with email complating because it's quicker, easier, easier to distribute to the board members and maybe effective residents. But if there is a requirement for mail, I'd rather have the post office box here than trying to work with the U.S. Postal Service or wherever to get a box. That way, if, you know, we have some board members and we can each have a, come by and check the mail or whatever, or, you know, a city recorder just say, hey, something's here and we can come and get it. For the last, you know, since May of '22, when we became a neighborhood association, we have gotten zero mail, snail mail. Lots of good emails. So that seems to be the most effective way that we have been communicating with our board and the residents as well as with city staff.
Councilor Culler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would suggest under Section 3, the G proposed for the new ad, that it would say that if, if a neighborhood association would like to have a mailbox at City Hall, they can do that. I don't know that we need to make a P.O. box.
We'll all think about that. Since there's no charge.
I think you could have one here at the City Hall, but I think leaving the option up to the neighborhood association, if they wanted to extend it on their budget, I don't see why they wouldn't be able to. I mean, it's just an option, so.
If the neighborhood association feels that's an appropriate expense and is getting the same budget, they're not going to get increased in the budget?
Right.
So, and you got your own.
Just wanted to line items on the budget expenditures.
Knowing that there's a no cost more available.
Right.
Councilor Housman?
Yeah, I think I concur with Ms. Rich here. Rodney, you'll have, you'll have to correct me assuming I'm on the right train of thought, but it's just an option to have this P.O. box. And the fact is that I think there is a broad assumption in the room that the amount of physical mail neighborhood associations will increase. Once we get all of this going, will be more than the one or two pieces a year. And maybe, maybe it's not more than three or four, but it could be substantially more and we just want to have the bandwidth for whatever that could be. So having, having City Hall centered options for the neighborhood associations seems completely commonsensical and we obviously can all work that out within this ordinance, but I don't see a reason why not to give up the option for the reimbursable P.O. box.
So as a, to kind of finish this, that in the new ad, that neighborhood associations may have their mail delivered to City Hall? Or if they choose to apply for or obtain a local post office box, it is an eligible reimbursable expense? Something to that effect? Is that good? All right, we got, looks like we have consensus on that. Councilor Culler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that if a neighborhood association wants to have a P.O. box, they can make that part of the budget. City needs to be on that.
If it's part of the budget, that's, that's allowable expense.
It's an allowable expense, yes, allowable expense, but as, as, we're going to budget so much money a year for the neighborhood association, if they want to spend some of it to do a P.O. box, that's fine. That's their option, right? But for them, I don't think that's right to give a neighborhood association extra money to do a P.O. box.
I don't think, I don't think we're attending that. This would be a, given their budget, if the neighborhood association makes that choice, that comes out of their standard budget, it would not be an additional. So I absolutely agree with you, and now on the, on the tape, that we do not intend for that to be an addition, but would be eligible, an eligible expenditure in the budget. Section 3, new H. And this is on reimbursable expenses. Maybe we combine this in with the G if we're talking about reimbursable expenses. So there's a thought.
Okay. And I will say, a lot of this also is the complicative of some of this set's work on the form that allows for expenses to be applied for.
Okay.
So this was just a try to memorialize what historically has been reimbursable. I will say that there was a question about whether or not refreshments, so that, these are literally, these are literally questions, if you guys want to allow that to be reimbursed or not, it's, it's up to you.
Okay, so reading through the bullet points here, and again, making a note that P.O. boxes is mentioned, so we'll just leave this as, you know, combine this into a conversation we just had about G, that it is a permissible expense. Looking at the marketing materials, booths, flyers, mailing signage, we need to make sure that's in there. Because that's not there. And that's one of the biggest things is the neighborhood association signage. Yes. Yeah. Councilor Housman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be willing to float out a reimbursement of up to $50 per meeting for refreshments. Give the people what they want. They want food, they want drinks, they want to be in the room with everybody when they're having food and drinks. $20 is good, but I think, I think 50 would be fine just because, one, food is a little bit more expensive nowadays, and two, it's a, it's a good enticement at the very least.
So may I suggest taking the dollar not out? Okay, that's why I'm getting some no flags. All right. I'm going to go to the people who actually organize these, I'm going to go to Ms. Rich and then Ms. Tisher.
My understanding has always been that we use our budget for communication. Anything where we get out the word to everybody. So refreshments has never been an option. I have mixed feelings on that because, well, Carolyn brings the cookies and I bring the water and it's not a problem. I think, you know, you could, you could say, you know, if you have a budgeted amount, you wouldn't get any more for your, your refreshments, but you could leave that option in there. But we probably won't be using it because we, we went for our budget and half our budget is for our newsletter. I mean, we, we spend all of our money for communication, newsletter, website, brochures. I would like to see added brochure boxes and scans and certificate of recognition or appreciation. And that's pretty minimal. Like Cover Creek Market Hall has a food barrel for us and we like to give them a little plaque or something to put up. And it gets our name out too. And so, you know, that, that, maybe that's something that's kind of goes under the others. And our little library, which we had for probably 10 years or so, I think the registration on that was used out of our budget because we felt that was also getting the burnout for our little library that our brochures in there. And I think it was like $35 for registration and I think we also materials for about 50. So I think we, you know, didn't charge labor, but somebody built the box and, and so that's, that's the few items that I would like to see added in.
So before I go to Ms. Tisher, may I suggest that we get a little more general and not more specific?
Okay.
So can we talk about marketing materials? Yeah, and we've got the insert that came from Mrs. Bissett. I didn't mean to jump past you, Patty.
No, it's fine because I was, I was just kind of going that.
You wanted, okay. We hit the lines, we hit the lines, okay. So we have some guidelines there on what are permissible expenditures. And if there's something outside of that, that would have to come to the, a request to be reviewed in compliance with our general procurement. So Congress. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So can we make this, once this document is agreed upon, can we make this an addendum, an appendix, and a whatever we're going to call it to the ordinance so that you can refer the ordinance to this document and we don't have to line everything out in the ordinance? So that's question number one. And then one thing I have on this Section 3 decision point is the next to last bullet point says reimbursement of other expenses on a case-by-case basis. That is like the biggest can of worms of, like, that I wouldn't encourage us to have in an ordinance or on the form because one person might approve something for Tammy on a case-by-case basis and then that person's out the next time an expense reimbursement comes in for Hirsch. And so somebody else is filling in and denies the case-by-case request from Hirsch and now you've got kind of differing approvals. So, and personally, as somebody who's ran a nonprofit, the line other was never allowed in grants and budget, like it just, that's akin to miscellaneous.
So kind of following up on that, my comment about taking this up a notch rather than down into specifics like little libraries and so forth, you said little libraries are a means of passing out the, the brochures. So if we can go marketing materials, events, and then, you know, operating expenses and meeting expenses.
I think you need a little bit more detail than that. And I go back to this document and if we agree on this document, make it an addendum or an appendix. Otherwise, you're really not going to need this document if you go with the four, three things that were just mentioned, so.
So take, and is the P.O. box included in there?
Yeah, it's up there under, or, one, two, three, fourth one up at the bottom.
Postage, office supplies. So we can just say postage and mail services. Just amend that one and then call it a day and then refer to that because this will be easier to update and then it would be included by reference in the ordinance. So if we find that there is an expenditure that you all are experiencing, we can come back and we can amend that and then by reference it goes into the ordinance. Does that make sense? Or if we find something that is really not working well, we can change that.
I would still, I agree with Chaney, others is just.
Yeah, take it out.
A nightmare, just to even consider. Well, that's what the reimbursement on case-by-case, if we change that to add the little libraries and the stand? The brochure boxes to go with the take a book, leave a book? That's how we distribute our stuff and it does cost us money for the little libraries registration and all of that, which is usually out of pocket because I don't take that from this budget.
All right, but we want to say that if we go with this bullet list, that in ordinance we would reference that. So rather than do these bullet points, go with the ones that have been created in this form. A little library would be eligible if it's used for promoting the neighborhood association, if the neighborhood association chooses to do that. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Tisher and I'll go to Mr. Sangster.
Well, what I was just going to say, like, because you've got office supplies here, I would think your brochure boxes, that would fall under office supplies. So, and you know, to, because the et cetera, I think falls under that. And then also your little free library, that is flyers, ads, banners, I mean, I think that that would fall under some of those. So I think with some of these items detailed, I think that some of those other items would fall under, you could broadly make them under. And then Council President Starr's comment as far as the case-by-case basis with different people approving expenses for different organizations, isn't System City Manager Tim Wood, isn't he the final sign-on? We don't have different people.
But he's gone.
Yeah, so, well, I guess, so that is kind of my question. So is, is there someone other than, or does it just wait then for Mr. Wood's return on those expenditures? I believe, I've never had anyone other than Mr. Wood approve any expenses.
When he does his vacation.
So I think, well, granted, yeah.
We don't allow it.
So does it, it just waits until he returns? So, yeah, so that was just my question, if he, in his absence, does someone else take over that role or does it just wait until he returns? I'm never in a hurry for reimbursement, so I.
Process wise, it's very, he's always, he always, and if there's any question, he will come over and tell me about it and run it by me, but timing wise, I don't think we've had an issue yet.
But I think to the, the point of equity and continuity is that if it is clear with this, this expense guideline, that's where we can make changes as we learn more. And again, we're coming up with a four century year, so I fully expect that we will learn things over the next year once we put this in place. But I agree with Council President Starr that other, other expenditures is.
Others miscellaneous, case-by-case.
We'll make all that up. So just in the ordinance itself, it will reference this. That work? Mr. Lindsey, have you got a head nod? I'll go to Mr. Sangster and Ms. Bush and then Councilor Culler.
Go along with all the discussions, but I want to go back to Councilor Housman's suggestion on per meeting. As somebody who has put on a lot of events over the years, food and refreshments is a draw. And one of the things that we're all is wanting to draw people. And we've been involved in the Candidates Forum and State of the Union, State of Kaiser for the Neighborhoods Meeting and we've all kind of put in, kind of potlocked it, but 20 bucks is really not, it, it covers one box of coffee and we have 70 people and a particular event that doesn't, doesn't, doesn't work. Most of our meetings are from eight to 10 to sometimes 15 people. It'd be nice to have light snacks, whatever, for the meeting. And I would like to have it a little higher than $20, I'm not sure about 50, but I would think at least 35. And that doesn't mean the neighborhood association can't spend hundreds, but that's all they can get reimbursed for is basic 35. The other thing that. The other thing that, um, and working with the Kaiser Police this year, we're gonna try to do National Night Out. We're gonna have to spend some money. So we want to be able to consider that a meeting and be able to spend some food money. But I think that kind of follows under the promotional and advertising.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Bush.
This is a different topic. Our president has brought in his recommending, their law, that we consider a translator for our meetings. Considering that especially Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood has a high population that speaks Spanish, we want to make sure we're reaching everybody instead of the bus.
So again, that could be an allowable expenditure under the new associations. Okay, I'm gonna go to Counselor Ross. And I'll go to Mr. Seinkster.
I one hundred percent agree with Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. People think that thirty percent of that area in the Kaiser are Spanish-speaking.
So add that to the allowable expenses.
And I will say, um, I heard just talking with various folks about this is that I think some people like that thirty thousand-foot view. And then other people actually want to know what's on the list. And so I think this is probably a good way to do that, which is point to a list and then actually make a list, but not necessarily make it part of the law. Just make it part of what is referenced. And I'm, I'm gonna add everything that I'm hearing.
Okay. So this will be in, as suggested, it'll be in the attachment, the expense guidelines. That would be something that we either will adopt by resolution as a, as a partner document to this ordinance, rather than trying to embed it into the ordinance itself. That way, we can continue to add to this as we learn more during the year, rather than have to reach the whole ordinance. Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add one more. Like, I really think that that's part of the whole equity lens I hear so much about is making sure that we are connecting with all of residents in Kaiser, not just...
Thank you. Thank you. So, uh, so...
Can we not put money, a dollar amount? The board, our board decides how we're gonna spend our twelve hundred. And if we decide that we wanted to spend a hundred for the year, and like her spend, it was fifty, why put a number on it?
Okay, so looking at the, so we'll add meeting food into the reimbursable. Right, so I'm looking at here in the, in, in under H. But if we, instead of H, we go with reference to the guidelines, which will be adopted by resolution separately. In those, in that resolution and the guidelines, we can add meeting food. But again, we're looking at you as you run your organization. You have a budget. So if you want to, you know, how you plan as your board and your expenditures given that budget to get the best bang for the buck, if you will, that's something that you and your board will decide. Do we really, do we want, I'm kind of revisiting this question again. Do we want Mr. Lindsay to put into the guideline a dollar amount limit or cap on food since the whole thing with the National Night Out has been brought up? Counselor President Starr.
So, in my world, sometimes grants or funding have conditions that you can't use the funding on food. Is there any restriction on what the neighborhoods, if it's on this list that the council adopts and the neighborhood associations agree to, is there any reason why they couldn't choose to spend four hundred dollars on National Night Out for hot dogs and buns and condiments and chips and soda and whatnot? I mean, is there any prohibition on them spending their budget that we're allotting on food?
Um, no. Okay, um, not, not really. I mean, what you're doing is you're giving outside organization the ability to, you're giving them a grant, basically, and then they're...
Right, and then there, when they're reimbursing, submitting for reimbursement, they're gonna give, the only thing I can see in here that we would put is no alcohol. I could, I could go along with that. No alcohol. I'm sorry to ruin everybody's National Night Out. I get to make the offer and invite less, but I'm Debbie Downer. I get it. But I would see no alcohol, no tobacco products, no whatever else is legal for people to buy. Like, we don't want to see our money going for, like, the, whatever that holds up as more making stuff or whatever. Like, any of that is a no, to me would be a no. But outside of that, why? And maybe they want to spend five hundred dollars on printing and five hundred dollars on whatever. Why are we gonna put a limit on the food if there's no legal prohibition on them paying for National Night Out food?
Well, and, and this is purely a policy decision, really. It's...
I'm just asking the question. There is none.
What if, well, I mean, I guess it's a matter of how much control people want to have over the money. You know, like you say, some grants have very specific parameters. I mean, you could imagine if somebody got twelve hundred dollars and they were not great folks and they just threw themselves a steak and lobster fest for their first meeting of the year and just blew it away.
Make sure you have my meeting at that.
I mean, that is the, that's the idea of putting some sort of cap and parameter on it. It's just so you know how your money's being spent. But if we trust that everybody is, you know, able to make those decisions, then no, there's no reason. I, I like the parameters of no alcohol.
So maybe up to five hundred dollars per year. I don't know. Like, I, I just, they're adults. They can budget it. Their boards can vote them out if they don't spend it right or they don't budget it right. Outside of that, I mean, it's, what am I missing?
And to follow up on that, I would just not, I would make it a reimbursable expense in the guideline period. And leave it to however you are going to spare these funds for all of the different things you're trying to do. But then you'll be reporting back to us and the public in your annual report. There's the accountability piece. So I'm gonna go to Counselor Hussin, and then I see some hands up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everybody, I'm sorry that we can no longer allow you to get to acquire marijuana edibles for your meetings. That is clearly off the list. As we discussed, pro, pro inhibitor for both things.
No.
For the folks listening, for the record, that was never on the table.
Better than we list all the things we can't do. Yeah, overall, I do concur with the general sense that we shouldn't necessarily put a dollar limit on food. I know I threw out an, an amount as a matter of happenstance, but the fact is that I agree with Madam Mayor in that we, we trust you all. And we trust you all to allocate money as you see fit. And the fact is that we, we have kind of a finite amount of money right now. It's twelve hundred dollars. And some, some of it is, some of it is the council asking the neighborhood associations to approve it, right? We want to see how the neighborhood associations can do. And yes, the annual report is going to reflect that ultimately because we want, we want to see the best base put forward in terms of how engagement goes. But, you know, this is a bit of an exercise in creativity, and we shouldn't put so many restrictions upon that. So, yeah, invite Council President Starr to your steak and lobster benefit. And, you know, we'll enjoy a National Night Out. And we're excited to see what everyone comes up with.
Hard works.
Can we be down with this section? Are we good? Counsel, I'm sorry, Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, I have a couple of thoughts. I know this is gonna be strange.
I don't see how.
A couple of years ago, there was a neighborhood association that has sponsors. And the sponsors helped pay for all of the stuff that happened at their neighborhood night out. And it was a shame bag. I mean, it was, it was a big shindig. And so I think if somebody wants to have a big neighborhood night out party, there's probably better ways to do it than to take it out of your budget. And then the second thing, I sit on the Parks Board. And the Parks Board has a budget for little projects for high school students or other, could be an Eagle Scout project. It could be a Girl Scout project. It could be three kids in the neighborhood that said, hey, let's go do this. There's a budget for that. And if you want to put a little library in somewhere, then let's do that, present that to the Parks Board. And guess what? You won't have to bring that out of your budget. Because it'll come out of that little budget that's put together for the Parks Board. So there are other ways to, to do things than have things come right out of your budget.
That was a strange all. That was very Kaiser. Oh, I'm gonna go to Ms. Tisher and Ms. Rich.
I just want to say on Counselor Kohler's point, for our National Night Out last year, because we wanted to have food and because our budget requirements at the time did not allow for us to have food, we did get sponsors for our hot dog fest. And we actually got more money than what we needed. And so we actually paid back to the people that had donated money to us. So, um, but it would have been nice to be able to have some money within our budget to allot some. Because it took a lot of work, you know, to go out and solicit those donations. And so we don't always have the time to do that. And so we, we had some extra help doing that last year. So, um, so having a little bit of leeway within our budget to allow to have food at our discretion. But we also, I always feel like we have a fiduciary responsibility on how we're spending those funds, too. And so to spend an entire thousand-dollar budget on food, I don't think that's being responsible. And hopefully, we all be adults enough to not do that.
Yeah, that would ever make your, your application for recognition the next year a little bit more challenging, shouldn't it, that way? Ms. Rich.
I'd like a little clarity on, um, not one of these items that comes out of our, well, actually, this came out of our budget. I had asked for some copies of our neighborhood traffic management plan for the board members to review because we were asked to give input. And we were charged forty dollars from the city to print them. So I wondered where we draw the line as to where that... I'm surprised that's the first time that we have been charged for any printing through the city. And I feel like if the city is asking for response from us, that we should be allowed maybe three copies for the officers, at least. Or, you know, I'm thinking like a master plan. Or I know that was a big packet. So I think that's why we were charged for it. But I'm glad to see we practiced. Yeah, but I just wanted some clarity there before we ask for anything further.
So what I'm seeing here on the guidelines is the first one is printout and copies of city retained documents. So that was a same document. So look at the guidelines. Expense guidelines for neighborhood associations. You have the summary, group expenses for neighborhood association purposes only, printout and copy of city retained documents. Now, if we want to, now, we don't, we're not gonna printout, you know, the entire development code for the entire neighborhood association. That would be like five hundred pages times, you know, hundred people. But, so there's a reasonableness here. But in terms of providing, we got some copies of city retained documents that's been put into this with that purpose. I'm gonna go to Counselor Reed and then Counselor President Starr.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. But I, I agree with Ms. Rich in that it's an approved expense to be charged for the budget and not something that would go to the city. So that, I think, is, is part of the clarification that needed is, um, you know, if that, the printout and copies of city retained documents are the responsibility to promote the neighborhood association budget or if that would be a city expense, so.
Good question.
Yeah, and I would think you, um... Into the microphone, this meeting, this is great. So I draw, I do see a distinction, though, between a document that you're requested to review, i.e. the strategic plan document or the traffic management plan or, um, maybe like this expense guideline sheet and the, you know, whatever. But for typical committee packets that you're not being asked as a neighborhood association to review, that, I think that, to me, that's the distinction. When you receive a document and you're asked to take it to your neighborhood, to the board to review it, that's us asking you to do something. I have a little bit of heartburn about charging the printing to their budget for that versus if you ask for, um, you know, like, the budget document, we're not necessarily asking the neighborhood associations to review that and give input on that. So if you wanted ten copies of that for your board, I could see that being charged. But if we're actually sending it to you and asking you to review it, to me, that's where I see the distinction. That's just my, like, I see that distinction versus you wanting a copy of the city meeting packet for Monday or whatever.
It doesn't happen very often, but it would be nice to know if we could get copies of that. And not for all of them.
And maybe do a maximum of five or something like that for the board. Like, just maybe some parameters or something. I don't know, just a...
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Tisher. And I'm getting an affirmative from Mr. Brown that that will be included in the next version of the, of the guidelines.
Um, well, what I wanted to say on the copy situation, um, a recommendation or request that, um, as Council City President, um...
Shady.
Are you?
Shady's good.
Ms. Starr.
What her suggestion as far as, you know, having, you know, like, five copies or whatever, but even like that we can have like a minimum of ten or fifteen before then we're charged. I know that, um, Kaiser Chamber, for their members, they allow a certain amount of copies. And Counselor Duran might know the number on this. But is it, do they not do that anymore? Or you don't know the number?
They do.
And so it used to be like you could get a hundred copies a year for no cost for their, their members. So if there was just like a number that we could get up to at no cost and then if we exceed...
That's not a reasonable distinction.
And I don't know what number would be a reasonable number of copies.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, yeah, I would just ask that there would be a maximum of, you know, five copies if we say, oh, we want a strategic plan to pass out to everybody in our neighborhood. Give them feedback on it. But it, it's as much of a concern about time of our staff than... But to say, yeah, that's, that's another way to structure it. Hundred copies a year or put a maximum for the year? Or, or a certain number per event, yeah. I mean, either way, it would work for me.
That would be essentially, you know, you're being given this much copy capability and then you as a board decide what we need. Imprint versus email, which is, and the electronic, which is all you want, all you can eat. Mr. Seinkster.
On, on this discussion, and I'm kind of in the electronic world and I prefer that, but since, oh, we are, almost all the documents talk, talk about the number of board members you're supposed to have, I would feel that our minimum should be seven. For a couple of copies.
Or copies of, uh...
We need copies of.
Or, but, but we do a total pages per year. So everybody's got this amount. And then you as a board decide how many, how many need.
I, I concur.
With that request.
On, on, on this list, my one item is, our focus this next year is, um, working on some web designing where all our documents are translated into Spanish. And with the program... where all our documents are translated into Spanish. And with the programming and probably software we might have, we want to make sure that we could purchase that with our budget.
Yeah.
So, I just want to make that our focus for next year.
So, it says website and social media maintenance fees. So, if you just added, maybe you could add translation software, whatever, to that, and it be in this document?
Perfect.
Yeah, but it's...
Because we just talked about adding translation capabilities, and Google Translate's getting better all the time.
Yeah, I know that my daughters do this, have had our elementary school, or the document. That's it. There is some language differences because of different dialects, but it's still a good first start for us.
Yes, exactly. Council Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And then, maybe when we're sending that, that's this visit that we're sending it to, even if it's Ken, that we're sending it into a Word document that's easy for him to cut and paste and put in that Google translator, if he's not capable of, like, switching over PDFs. So, we're making it easier.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So, we're up against 7:37, and we've all gotten through Section 3, which there's a big deal work ahead on Sections 5, 6, 7, and 8. So, maybe we object to try and get through as much as we can by eight o'clock, and then following it, but we might have to compete again to finish it. Because there's quite a bit left. All right, let's fall into Section 5. And, Mr. Brown?
Again, for Section 5, A2, amend membership to include the protected classes. Shall not be limited based on any protected class under ordinance or federal law, from what it currently reads, which specifically names some protected classes, which somewhere like that, so that's a words recommendation to amend the language.
Okay. Council Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out that when, like, the way I just read it, I just had a [inaudible] that the membership or participation should not be limited. When we're not doing our best to make sure we're getting those translations into Spanish, or Ukrainian, or similar to our meeting numbers, we are limiting based on. Would that be correct, Ms. Lindsay?
It would be a form of error.
So, any other comments on the change on 5A2? Let's go. Okay, next. 5A4.
5A4 was a decision right here that was discussed the last time we met, to add at least half of the regular meetings to take place within the recognized boundary of the association. And this staff, we felt like that would be a limiting factor, a barrier to the association.
So, staff recommendation is to not make this change, and to leave that off, because as we discussed, some neighborhood associations don't have places appropriate within their boundaries to have those meetings.
Or the ability to get insurance.
And all of the above. So, anybody object to not making this add? Okay, it is not added. Yeah, Council Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The other part of that is that City Hall here is not within the boundaries of most of the associations, and this is where most of the meetings are being held.
And it's accessible, it's predictable. So, when people are looking for a meeting, they know to come here. There's a natural rational nexus for availability and accessibility. Okay, next. 5A7.
The add to 5A7 was to say that the board directors shall fill any position vacancies at the first meeting, following the vacancy. And we wondered if that was just overly restricted. Maybe a two-month time period would be better than to expect it to be filled the very next meeting.
So, I've got a question for the neighborhood associations. In your bylaws, do you have a procedure for filling vacancies on your board?
Yes.
So, should not the process in the board bylaws be the one? Are we asking then for the neighborhood association to change their bylaws to this, or go with the one that they already have in their bylaws? Mr. Brown?
We're finding it possible to find candidates to fill some positions, so the two-month requirement would eliminate us shortly. We're going to be filmed, we're going to be finding a board body, but a board body is available right now.
But did you have a process within your bylaws for filling vacancies?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll send that across the board. Council President Starr?
What is each of their respective processes in your bylaws?
It's to appoint and pass any nomination next meeting, we have a candidate.
If you have a candidate, or does it read, you will fill the vacancy?
No, it says we have something to do with it.
It says that?
No, it doesn't specify that you have to fill it. Just, we have a number of the board members, minimum number, maintain the board, and then we fill positions as we can.
So, there is no, but what's the process? I think, so there's, so I think it's really important here, where the words matter, like, could and should, and versus shall and will. So, you have, your bylaws say, seven board members. I don't know how many it says.
That's what it says.
Darn it, should have brought that power ball to me.
You're reading.
So, your bylaws say your board has, shall have seven members, and it says shall have, correct?
Up to seven members.
Oh, it says.
Up to seven members.
Up to seven members. Okay. And then, what does it say? So, that's one, like, how many you should have on your board. But it says up to, what does it say when you have a vacancy?
We don't have any [inaudible] we just currently, like, a candidate and approval.
But it, does it say, like, upon a vacancy, you will fill that vacancy within three months or ninety days?
I would call it [inaudible] bylaws for that, please.
Okay.
So, you don't have a process?
That's true.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to.
We have a written one.
Who doesn't have a process? Hersch?
Well, we've kind of, I think, we stole their stuff, because now, I think everybody has something similar.
Or lay jurism of its finest.
Well, it works.
Sharing is caring.
Yeah, exactly. Now, now, who's three? To get a neighborhood association started, up to seven, and we are to fill them as soon as possible. And as Ken said, we started in 2022, and we had three, and we started getting a few more, but it took time. And a two-month limit, or requirement, might just put us out. But, you know, we kept at it, and now we have a full seven board members. But, no, we are, at almost every meeting, when we had an opening, we'd ask for any nominations, and anybody willing to step forward. So, it was on the agenda every month when we had an opening.
Right, thank you. Patty, what is yours saying?
Truthfully, I don't know what the process, what it actually says. I would have to look up in the bylaws what it says. But, I mean, as you know, I mean, we haven't had a full board, and even, like, looking back, when Jane and I took over, we didn't even have a full board six years ago, and even before that. So, I think, to say a specific timeframe, I think that would put a lot of our associations out. I think more appropriate would be, you know, as soon as able, or if they're, you know, and that's not the right wording, but to just have it be more open-ended, you know, as far as the wording.
Thank you. Rhonda?
We don't know how many time we're going to be filling a position, but in our bylaws, we have, the president resigns, the vice president can become president, and the vice president can be appointed by the board to serve the remaining term. Next, a vacancy in any other office will be filled for the remaining term by a majority vote at the next board meeting. The board may be, the board may, by majority vote, declare a board position vacant if members have set for four consecutive meetings, whether regular meetings or specially called. So, that's how we...
So, by the next meeting?
Yeah. We try. I mean, it's, you know, it's some [inaudible] thing that, you know, we try to have somebody exactly the same.
As last.
Yeah, I think we follow the ordinance.
Yeah, I do.
Our bylaws follow the ordinance.
Our, that sounds just like ours.
But this is an add that you're...
That's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking. So, yours is this, Hersch, but yours is saying yours is the same as Wes Kaiser?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this is an add to the ordinance, then, not the bylaws?
But it would then be, but this is in the ordinance, and since it's Section 5, these are the standards for the bylaws. So, 5A is the bylaws, what shall be in the bylaws. That's what this is. So, the conversation here is about adding under Section 7, which currently raises, the association shall, and I'll look it to your council husband, shall have a board directors with the president, vice president, secretary, who shall be elected annually by those present at the annual meeting. The association may establish additional elected positions on the board, which your bylaws do. The board roster, including names, addresses, and for the record, emails, so just making that add there, shall be filed with the city recorder, and the association will provide one address for the city for mailing purposes. So, we can revisit that one pursuant to our earlier conversation. But to the point that this is 5A7, if we're adding something about filling vacancies, you have included that in your bylaws. You have a process in all your bylaws, based on what you heard from Ms. Rich. So, there's two questions. One is, you've just really shared about the process and how you have to work to get a full board. And I think the other question may be on the minimum. Do you all have a minimum of three required to be a board?
Yes, you call the board.
Okay, so you all have a, you have to have three. You have to have those three positions on your board. Is the required?
The [inaudible].
Yep. Okay, so we've got the minimum three in all cases.
Yep.
And all of those have to, at all times, have their contact information filed with the city recorder.
Yes.
Do you require them to be active members?
Can't miss more than three meetings when you have a choice.
You have a choice?
Quick, quick, secondary meetings, you can vacate the position and try and refill.
Sorry, everyone. Do you mind going down the line again, starting with the dynamic duo of Ms. Bush and Mr. Girloff? How many meetings are you required to have per year in your neighborhood association by your bylaws?
One. Annual meeting.
Everyone's got one, okay.
Yeah.
Good. Just wanted to check that, because that's obviously lowest common denominator stuff here. Because we, if it's only one, then, of course, we have, we have an obvious upper bound wall of this, right, which is one year, because that's when we expect reports to be filed, and we expect to revisit neighborhood association matters, frankly, every year as a council. So, with that, we're obviously creating the most, the most specific entity, since you guys have it so broad, which, thank you for doing that, seriously. If everyone had it safe, it makes it a lot easier. But outside of that, I generally agree with the staff recommendation that first meeting, first meeting is a little clunky, but maybe a timeframe would be helpful to ensure the neighborhood associations are on the right track with that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you. When I was looking at this, I was assuming if it fell below the primary three that has to be.
Yes.
That the standard that you guys would want to set is that you have to get that back to the standard three, if that makes sense. Of course, you guys can change whatever standard you guys have, but the idea was, if our ordinance calls for at least three members in order to exist, if it calls below that standard of three, you have to, next meeting, get it back up.
Okay, then, I would like to clarify that in this writing.
Okay. Because, because we don't necessarily know, they can have additional elected positions or not. But that notion was trying to follow kind of suit with what most boards have to do, which is, you have to get to an operating number. So, if the operating number is three, at the next meeting, you have to fill at least to the minimum amount of positions.
In order to be actually functioning as a group?
If that helps.
That helps tremendously, actually. That changes the frame of the conversation. Council Cross, did you have something?
I just wanted to remark that you all do great work. You spend a lot of time on this, so I do not want to make anything harder than it needs to be, or to create any more obstacles. But now that you've clarified that, that's fantastic.
Okay, that does change the focus. So, we're talking about when you, if your board drops below that minimum three, which is the ordinance requirement, that, yeah, that needs to happen, like, now, to keep you, and keep the neighborhood association in compliance. That said, let's go back and revisit this part of the conversation then. Shall fill any vacancies at the next meeting to meet the minimum standard. If it drops below the minimum standard, you got to wake back up. Otherwise, you're out of compliance.
So, it's the officer positions that you're talking about, president, vice president?
Well, if it's down to three, that's what you got, yeah.
Right, yeah. So, you could say fill any...
Fill the officers. That are the officer positions. Make sure they're all filled. I'm going to, Council President Starr and Mr. Sangster.
And they need to be an active member, because you all have attendance requirements, right?
Okay, I'm gonna go to Mr. Sangster, then Council Reed.
I concur, up to a point, but I'd like to have two months.
Okay.
Just knowing, it takes time to get the word out, some time to get volunteers, go to some other meetings, twist some arms, so...
Well, with, and with this clarification, I'll go to Council Reed. It says the first meeting, the first, the next meeting can happen one month, two months, three months later. So, we're not putting it, did we just have a made of the minds?
We did.
Okay.
It was a triangle.
Okay, we did that, okay. Ms. Reed, you went there, too.
Well, if I, let me clarify in my mind. If I have only three people at April meeting, and I have a resignation at our April meeting, then I have to have somebody by the May meeting?
If you have a May meeting, or if you put it off till June, your next meeting, you have to be in compliance as a neighborhood association. You have to have the three officers.
I agree with the three, but I just know that sometimes it takes time to do your recruitment.
Totally respect. We good, Ms. Reed? Council Reed?
Yeah, so just to clarify, that, you know, the fact that we've established that you only have to have one meeting a year anyway, so that April vacancy may not be filled until October, if that's the next meeting. So, but just kind of knowing that that should be taken into account as you schedule your meetings. So, it has to be in compliance with that, so.
But at what point, I just want to make sure we're not boxing ourselves into, right, and we're something that we can't get out of. You have, the bylaws require, or our ordinance requires three officers. You have, the bylaws require, or our ordinance requires three officers, right? I've fully recognized, Hirsch, what you're saying is it takes time. But to your example, Councilor Reed, you have, and using Hirsch's, you have April, and then you don't have a meeting till October. You've now essentially gone six months where that neighborhood association is not in compliance with the ordinance requiring them to have the three officers. So I, like, we gotta think about what were, how, you know, and then they could maybe cancel the October meeting, and cancel the November meeting, and they don't have one in December, and then you're back around to January, and... So I'm just offering a word of caution from a board governance perspective that you, I would caution us to be careful about staying at the next regularly scheduled meeting and saying, be careful when you schedule it, because you could then have, for all intents and purposes, a neighborhood association, from a governance perspective, not in compliance with the ordinance for nine, 10 months. And I'm looking at our attorney about that. Because as a board governance, that would not work.
What we're really talking about here is, these are all standards for recognition. And so if you can't pull together or even meet for a year, maybe you're not very active.
That's why I'm saying, let's think about the perspective from that, from a board governance perspective.
I'm going to go to Mr. Girloff.
A couple of years ago, we actually pulled, dropped a little bit of the first rule. We had two members. And, but we suspended it for a couple of months until we found a candidate, and then we met and filled the board. So we just suspended all our operations altogether. We, we are compliant, so we suspended. And I think that's probably the way to handle something like that. Suspend your operations until you can fill your board, if that you can do it. Fill that.
Okay. That's a point well taken. Thank you for that example. Uh, Councilor Haseman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Girloff, I totally agree. I, I think what's come up in light of these discussions is that a neighborhood association essentially has 12 consecutive months, one calendar year, to meet that. Otherwise, recognition is simply not viable.
So in looking at wrapping this up on 7A5A7, we need to clarify that we're talking about the officer, that we're talking about the officer. Three minimum has to be maintained at all times.
I would propose to say to meet the three officer positions. And I have heard, and I would look for consensus, with active members, to, to replace them with active members.
Because they all have attendance requirements.
So if that language seems to be accepted.
Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would just be a little wary of that, because we replace it with active members seems to indicate that we are replacing the officer with other board members that may or may not be there. So I think, you know, just the fact that they do have attendance requirements in their bylaws already, you know, for instance, maybe they appointed, you know, that they, they are lacking a secretary, and that brings them down to two board members. Well, if they bring the secretary, it could be a brand new secretary that has not been on the board, and that new secretary would therefore have to, you know, evidence participation. But I'm just saying that if, if we did what you were saying in terms of active language, that seems to be indicating that we appoint somebody who's already an active member, which is not what we're going for. So just, just to be clear on that, so it's not confusing my business.
So if I could kind of turn that around a little bit, though? What I'm hearing is that, like, if a person is appointed to the board, you all have attendance requirements going forward, and if that person is appointed to the board, especially in an officer position, and then they are absent for three or four months, depending on your outlaw, on your outlaw... Wow! On your outlaw bylaws, then that position is declared vacant.
Can be.
Can be. Okay. So we've got...
There are exceptions for illness and things like that, but they can be replaced or inactive for many months.
Okay, so then...
Three should say.
All right. So the, the board members would be, be required to be in compliance with that, are already required to be in compliance with your attendance to be defined as active. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Anything else on 5A7 at the same o'clock? So... Everybody almost come out? I don't... I think we are, I think we're pretty close. Can we see if we can move that through? Because I've got one I really, really want to bring, or at least up the pin in for future work. But let's, let's get through, I think we have 5, 5A8 boundaries. Oh, Councilor Reed.
Thank you. I just wanted to just quickly mention the 5A8, and just kind of put it to the, the board members. There, there is nothing in there that specifies how often the, the bylaws need to be reviewed. I believe that in the bylaws, there are provisions for that, but do we need to put something in our, in our ordinance about bylaws need to be reviewed every two years, or every four years? Or do we need to put a timeframe on there, or is that already covered?
We do it every year at our annual meeting, prior to our annual meeting. So that's why times we change the bylaws in our annual meeting, so we review prior to our annual meeting, and then any changes then. So we're all doing that.
But we have to bring it to you if we make a change in the bylaw. Right? It has to be approved by the city.
Yeah, as part of your, as part of your recognition and your reauthorization, yes. If there's a change, it comes with your, your report. Because we do have to make sure that they're in compliance with Section 5. Mr. Sangster?
Sangster.
Mr. Sangster.
That's getting late.
I need more coffee.
I, I, it's tea now.
It's electric, I care.
Yes. We do the same thing as Ken, but we didn't do it this year because of this document, because it has an impact on our bylaws. So when we come Monday for our annual report to you, we will still be operating under the original one. But by next year, 2025, we'll be able to...
And maybe it's more in line with either a time period or upon revision of the ordinance. And that we will be looking at this, we'll be meeting on an annual basis. In the ordinance, I would like to include that the council and neighborhood association shall meet at least annually in a work session. Well, yeah, but we, last year was the first time we did this. And so let's keep it going. This, once it's, once it's a, it's a habit that's twice as a tradition. Yeah, now it's a habit of tradition. Councilor Haseman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I trust the neighborhood associations to have in their bylaws a specific year or point at which bylaws must be reviewed, and then have that be stuck to with some documentation of the minutes. And I don't necessarily think that council needs to go above and beyond whatever's in the neighborhood association's bylaws.
Okay. Anything on, we're looking at 5A8? So I'm to, to Councilor Reed's point in the following discussion on review, that bylaws will have a review clause in them, and that will be submitted. Any changes please submit to the city council. Okay. And we know there's going to be a wholesale update after we finish this process. Uh, 5A8?
5A8 is, establishes the neighborhood's boundary by council resolution.
Okay, so it's changing it from, shall council have final determination of the boundary? So we're just changing the language to simplify it. Okay. Anything on that? Okay, let's go to 5, uh...
Let me check here for my thoughts. This is for the recognition by council, this, this point. Just by neighborhood associations can exist with or without the city recognition. So this is just...
That is for the recognition.
Okay. No, clear.
And just to put that in other words, so anybody listening that's taken the future, the, any neighborhood association, you could just grab your neighbors and go, "We're an association now," and raise a flag and call it good. This is for the city to officially recognize you. Is this what this ordinance does? And so he's just asking, is it true that you could still be a neighborhood association and just not have city recognition, and that is...
And does that come with money?
No.
But you have, I'm sorry. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But you have to be recognized by the city to get the budget from this city, is that?
Yeah. And, and some of the other, you know, like, standing and notice and all those sorts of things.
Okay. Okay, 5C2, adding social media. Again, something that didn't really exist a whole lot a quarter century ago. And then this is something too, for the sake of continuity, making sure you have at least three administrators, that could be three officers or whoever you want to have. Again, that's up to y'all, y'all. But, you know, if somebody wins the lottery and leaves town, all the passwords, the other people need to have the passwords. So we want to make sure that that's really clear. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick thing, let's make sure we have the right "it's" in that.
Yes. Thank you. English teacher.
Oh, well done.
Yes. It just dumps out the page, doesn't it?
It does.
Yep. Fully get that. Also, under 5C2, there's a language that says, and this goes again, a quarter century ago, it's a little bit more gushy. It says, must, quote, "try to do public outreach." That's really gushy on our 5C2. You have some? Okay. The association, quote, "must try to solicit the participation or input of all members" through newsletter, da, 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 da. I, I don't know why that needs to say that. That's kind of what you do. So the "must try to," that starts me as odd language. Just cross it out. The association solicits the participation or input of all members. That's what you do. I'm going to put a "shall" that you're going to do all these things, because that has other ramifications. Just shorten it up. The association solicits the participation. And you've been needing to say...
And then add that language at the end.
Yeah.
To make it, yeah.
Including social media, yeah. And take off the other means. Media coverage, personal contact, live distribution, social media, and social media, period. Rather than including just "and" social media, period. Add that sentence on social media standards, et cetera. Did I know?
Sure.
Okay. Are we good with that? Looking, looking, all right. I know we're looking through. Okay.
Is that something that I just want to make sure about? Is that something, can I...
Yeah, Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So that three administrators on your social media pages is good because of somebody off the winning powerball ticket on Columbia Boulevard. If you decide to move to the Bahamas, you're not going to, and somebody comes in to take over, you have, there is somebody that, you're, we're not going to lose access to that neighborhood association page. Yes, yes, yes. Hirsch, correct? We saw these three. Okay, good, thank you.
We want to make sure it's not on ours, but we also want you, you guys, to have control of your media. Okay. And this is on...
And the minimum of attendance of three members with the regular term mean, attendance will be averaged quarterly.
Okay. Just to, uh, Councilor Haseman, then Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Councilor Korch stole my thunder, but he's absolutely correct. If their bylaws indicate that they only need at least one meeting a year, and frankly, we're making them only hold one meeting a year. So the phrase, "attendance will be averaged quarterly," probably doesn't even need to be in this section. The rest of the language, I'm totally comfortable with.
Uh, Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add the possibility of the virtual meetings. That might count with this. Regular general meetings, I don't know that we need to specify that. Is that sort of assumed to be under that? But that I know, you know, I know the Northeast, Greater Northeast has, has been having some really good success with virtual meetings. So, and then I guess the other piece of that is, I know Southeast has a very strong online presence, you know, through Facebook and perhaps Nextdoor and so forth, but it's not necessarily in the form of meetings. And so I'm wondering if we can somehow, and maybe that's a bigger deal than we can really accomplish today, but I would like to see that count. Because that is serving the neighbors in a different way than, you know, a meeting here at City Hall. But it is, it is definitely a service to the neighborhood, to the neighborhood.
All right, again, this is the quarter century jump. So looking at 5C4, currently reads, association must hold regular board and general meetings. So to that point, yes, and we are requiring general meetings with, quote, "timely appropriate notification to members," is all it says. So, again, timely appropriate notification does not have definition. General meetings, it's just saying they must have regular board and general meetings, plural. So there is an implication that there will be more than one a year, although there's only the requirement for the annual meeting. But I don't know if we want to set a minimum or a threshold, but I'm seeing no from across the board of you all. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just another board governance distinction. There is a difference between, between the number of membership meetings in your bylaws and the number of the board meetings a year. So I think that's a distinction that we want to be careful on, because when I'm reading Ken's bylaws, it talks about the board will hold one meeting, one general meeting per year. So that's, that's specific. I read that to be specific to Ken's board, not a general neighborhood association meeting. So we need to be cognizant of the distinction of that.
Oh, Councilor Reed?
So, and I'm looking at, you know, Southeast and Greater Northeast, where the three board members are the, are the general meeting. And so I would, because that's who shows up to those meetings, is those three people.
Unless you do the, but you can't, you gotta clarify what you're talking about in your bylaws.
Yeah, so I would probably merge those two, given the, the current state of things. You know, I, I would hesitate to make that distinction, because, you know, the, the board meetings are the general meetings, you know, in a lot of...
Not necessarily. Rhonda Hope, they...
Well, not for Rhonda. You know, Rhonda's got it.
The curses are different.
There's a platinum version. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying, for those of, the, the neighborhood associations that don't have the numbers in terms of attendance, there is no distinction between the regular and the general board meetings.
There should be, from a board governance perspective.
I'm going to go to Mr. Lindsay, and then I want to go to all y'all, but I think there's a, I've got another question.
Well, I think this was sort of a floor. You know, I mean, the notion that it, it would be a shame if people got down to the three officers that they have to have, and then of those officers, only one showed up at a meeting, or two showed up at a meeting. You know, and you still have a filled position, or you only have one person at your meeting, or two people at your meeting? That, that, to me, seems like a reasonable floor to say, "At least have your officers all show up," and, and aim a little bit higher. So, right, you're, I mean, this is sort of the bare minimum. And, and what this is is sort of a standard that I think the council is trying to, or should sort of have, right? Because that says... Because that says an active member.
It's become some philosophical conversation of what you want to require in your bylaws. So right now, what we're saying is it's one, one for the board meetings and one for the general membership. So the philosophical conversation is, do you want to eliminate one requirement for the board and one for the general membership? Because if your ordinance says they have to apply, or they have to comply with the bylaws, you've got a problem unless you change, and you need, I'm just saying, like, you can't have the ordinance say to comply with the bylaws and then have two different situations in the bylaws that are preventing them from meeting one and/or the other, both, unless you change what the ordinance says and allows them to change their bylaws.
Your law.
Well, the court issue takes care of the one issue. We, we don't function unless we have our courts, so that, we'll make that possible. We have board meetings generally through the year, and then we have our march meetings, which is our membership. And the only time we can change our bylaws is when we elect our officers, so it is entirely different.
So that's like, that's like the difference between, if your general meeting is with all that stuff in place, and you can come, now you come to the city council and deliver a report, and now you go back, go back home into our business, okay? We do it again the next year, and we report.
Okay, so, as I'm understanding the definitions, board meeting is one at which board business is conducted. And then the general meeting is one where you have all the members, which is defined above, attendance, and there may be only one, but there may be more than one during the year, or is there only one? One. So this is like the annual meeting. Okay, so board views, so help me understand, the monthly meeting license coming Thursday for West Kaiser, is that considered a board meeting?
No.
Not.
Is it considered a general meeting?
Um, yeah, yeah, we're doing joint general meetings, so everybody gets credit for it, so.
Okay, so that's considered a general meeting, so if you wanted to do something like election of officers or bylaws and stuff, it's got to be done on Thursday, if there was no delay since then. Got it. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Rich.
We're required to have one annual meeting, the board will hold a general meeting on the second Thursday in January, but the board will, at a minimum, hold quarterly meetings to conduct association business.
Okay.
Because the board is where we make decisions, the general meeting where we're kind of just carrying over information and finding out what the members want.
That's what we do as well.
Okay, you both did that, you both did that. Are you all the same?
We have, we have the general meetings, the speakers, the information, council members are there, and stuff, then we have our board meetings as needed. So far, we've had three or four already. And we're focused on it, coupling whatever the issues are to...
Okay. Council Reed, and then I'll go to Ms. Tishir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so I, I think part of this is just making sure that it's clear in the minutes what it is, because again, last week at the Greater Northeast, it was me and Tammy and Jackie, which could have been a board meeting, could have been a general meeting, because that's who shows up. So just being clear, and you're right, different kinds of businesses can be conducted in different kinds of meetings, but being clear as, in the minutes as to what kind of meeting it is.
Okay. That's fine, you all. Ms. Tishir, do you have something?
Um, well, no, I didn't want to have anything, other than as far as the board meeting is definitely separate from the general meeting, and we, in our association, and I, Janie has her bylaws up, and they're not right, they need to be revised, but we generally have at least one actual board meeting, like, for general, but then we have what could be considered a board meeting when we're doing planning for National May Out. So that's a separate, I mean, that could be considered.
Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to throw in there too, executive board is something different than the two of those things. So, I don't know if that needs to be acknowledged or included in that as well.
Do you have definitions of executive boards? Okay, so it's not included in, in how these are structured. So I've got, I want to turn this a little bit, is the purpose of 5C4 to define having board and general meetings, or is the purpose of that to say that meetings are going to be noticed with, in a timely manner? Because the way I'm reading this one is it might actually, the intent, and again, this, I mean, this ordinance of 1993, so it's been a minute, I don't know what the intention was, but I'm reading this a little bit, going, that they're going to hold these meetings with timely appropriate notification to members. Is the purpose of this to say you're going to notify people?
Yeah.
Rather than defining how, what you're going to have?
Well, and this language, I mean, it's up to you guys what you want as far as a standard for meetings in general. You could make it a separate, you know, number, or you can add it to the meetings itself, but you're right, originally, we wanted them to hold regular board and general meetings and make sure that they notify their members of what they're doing. What, what this language proposes to do is also add a standard to those meetings, which is have more than, you know, a couple people.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Mr. Stansfield, I'll go to Counselor Coler and Council President Star.
Currently, we differentiate between board meetings and general meetings with their agendas, and the agendas are posted on our website as well as sent to the city for when the meetings are and what's, what's the agenda item. And then after, once our meeting minutes are approved for both the board and the general meeting, they're posted on our website and then posted on the city site, and they're the typical minutes, you know, who said what, whatever, and who was in attendance. So I think we're complying with what you're talking about.
I'll go to Counselor Coler, Council Reed, and then, oh, no, and then Counselor Coler and then Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry this has been so confusing. You've been generally misleading. One of the neighborhood association meetings that I've attended in the last five years, there was a meeting noticed, and we showed up, and they only had two of their, two of the board members there, they just didn't hold the meeting, they would just disappear a little bit, and so, I don't know how that, I mean, you could say, yeah, we're gonna have a meeting, but if we didn't have a quorum, then we didn't have a meeting, so then how does that, how does that affect the rule that is being proposed?
I would say, if, if the board was operating at a bare minimum, and the bare minimum is three officers, and then you could have a quorum by having two officers show up, but if you did that all year long, because there was only somebody absent, that wouldn't be very active, and then it would lead to probably being substandard for this standard, and then, then it, it's sort of letting people know how, where the substandard line is, it's the floor of standard, if that makes sense.
I'm gonna go to Council President Star and then Ms. Tishir.
So here's a question. Bylaws typically, I, I just want to know, why do we have bylaws? Like, they're very constructive, and this is a, this, I'm throwing this out there, trying to understand it. Twenty-five years ago, what was the purpose of establishing bylaws? Because in my world, bylaws are for independent nonprofit organizations, right? That's, like, that's, I write them and review them every, every day, edit them, whatever. So my question is, why are we holding, why are we, why are they called bylaws? Why are they structured, but they're really not a nonprofit organization? Why do we not have general neighborhood charters and then the, either call them expectations or call them guidelines? Because when you, in my bylaws, like, if you don't meet them, you, like, you're out of compliance, you're not meeting standards. So I, I'm just, it's a, it's a philosophical question of why do we have bylaws for our neighborhood association?
I would say...
If they're not all standard.
I, I would say the model looks to sort of have them treat themselves like they're nonprofit, so that there's governance going on that's actually kind of acceptable. That's my best guess.
So I'm gonna go to Ms. Tishir, and then to Mr. Yelov.
Well, I have something else I was gonna say, but piggybacking on what Counselor President Star was saying, I would think, and what my common sense tells me, the reason we have bylaws is so that we can be recognized by the city council, so that we can then request budget funds.
But we're the ones requiring the bylaws, so why are we not asking for, why are we not forming it, like, charters and committees and, like, we, that's my question. Our committees don't have bylaws, right?
No.
No, but that's just a question.
No, but you, because you guys have kind of standards and procedures.
I mean, I understand it, but we're, we're asking our, not, our neighborhood associations to operate like independent nonprofits, and I get it, you want structure, but you can achieve that structure by having a charter for that neighborhood group or that association, and you can change, instead of having purpose and area, like, you can have all that within the charter. I'm just asking, like, it just seems, you have five different sets of bylaws with five different ways of doing things, for the most part, I'm just, it's a question, why are we requiring it, and then they're not able to meet it? It just begs the question.
A very good question.
Mr. Yelov.
Oh, I didn't, do I have to do, but that's my question.
I think I can answer that back in the nineties when we were operating, we did register nonprofits with the state for liability purposes, and neighborhood associations, particularly other for KNA, which is a funding one, C3, so that's the hangover from that, when we started neighborhood associations for City Kaiser.
Because that's the way we've always thought of it.
Yeah, that's required, that's the way we did it.
So piggybacking off of that, if they were allowed to be type 013C, that opens us up to be able to design, like, and get extra funding to operate. But that's not where I was originally going. So, uh, online forum meetings, we have a really robust online setting, where my in-person meetings are really short and really not well-attended, but I average with my online setting fifteen to thirty, well, last week, forty-five, but that's what we were working on, bylaws.
That sounds great.
And I wanted to send them to you to make sure that we were being compliant with that part, which, thank you for not making me change that, I appreciate that, because that was crazy. But if we change this stuff to charter, that opens us up to more freedom, though I do like the idea of the 5013C, because I don't know what to say, no, for other areas, but I don't want that headache, so. Moving back to the charter idea, that gives everybody a little bit more freedom, for those of us who struggle with the in-person stuff, to really excel and change that format, and maybe without those restrictive concepts that would allow Greater Dexter to grow, us to grow, Ken to grow, Hirsch to grow, Rhonda to grow, even bigger.
They're gonna take over the whole town.
Just because of the Kaiser, you were gonna...
Yeah, there you go.
Well, now, there isn't anything that makes...
You're in charge of everything.
Make some meeting be at City Hall, it is just something that has transparency, I mean, those are still meetings, if you're having them and you're having, and your, your attendance is up.
Right.
Nice job.
It was just a way for me to meet my community where they're at, because I'm a little bit unique where I have some, wait, is it recording? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna, after where that was going, I have to protect some domestic violence films.
Oh, yeah.
So they don't come to this building because they can't. They have to be protected. So for that, they talked me into doing the online thing, which I was totally against being stuck in Zoom forever, but it's really working for them, and it's really working for us in the online setting. And I'm pretty active and pretty on top of making sure minutes and all that are turned into dawn, and everybody gets a fourteen-day notice and all of that kind of stuff. So if we could move to a different discussion of changing it from bylaws to charters, that might take off a lot of the restrictions and allow more continuity between everybody.
So, we're at eight-thirty.
Sorry.
And we, no, I wish we'd had this idea pop up two hours ago, or last year, but we are where we are now. But this is why we're here, this is why we are doing this wholesale look, and we kept, we kept asking the question, is what we've always done still working? We knew a year ago it wasn't, we've made a lot of changes, and by bringing everybody together, I think we might have a new model that might work better. Council, Duran, did you have something before I go jumping onto this?
I just, I just think with how, if we call it something different, it's still gonna work the same. I, I don't think we're restricting it too much, and we're making a few changes here that I think are gonna benefit from that, but I don't think, oh, with a charter, we're calling it, I don't know, what we're doing now. It really doesn't, because the structure's gonna stay the same, the same people are gonna be there, the same stuff's gonna happen, so you're just calling it something different, in my opinion.
But it does change things, because if we're looking at it like bylaws, they're pretty restrictive in what some of us can do at the moment, and if we change it to charter, then people coming in to attend meetings, some of the people that attend my online meetings won't come because of the restriction of the bylaws, and partly because walking in there on camera. And I have some folks who are not here legally, but they're working on that, so there's still that fear mindset, but turning it into a charter works the same way, but it opens it up for more flexibility, and it's not so restrictive.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Tishir, and then ask Mr. Lindsay to, to talk a little bit on the difference, and then we're gonna go into wrap-up.
Um, I just wanted to say, as far as with the, this is what I was gonna talk before, the minimum attendance of three members at regular general meetings, and then, and I don't know if we decided that we weren't gonna average quarterly or whatever, but for our neighborhood association, if it had to be, well, I would say, mostly, we probably have a minimum of three members. Obviously, our board is not a very active board, we have people that are pretty much just in name only, and they don't attend, but our National May Out event, every year, we have fifty, seventy-five, eighty people, and so at least one... And so, at least one meeting a year, because we consider that a meeting, we have huge attendance. But it's just, again, getting people to be on board, that's a scary thing. So if we did a charter, because I've had people come up to me, probably, and now if we would change things as a charter, I'd probably have a good five to six people that would say yes and sign their name on the line. But to put a president or vice president or secretary behind their, you know, they didn't want that type of a responsibility. So anyway, it just, it would change things, but all this, it would just blow up everything that we've already been doing. But maybe it wouldn't be that difficult to stop and restart.
Well, I think a lot of what we talked about in terms of what we are desiring for our neighborhood associations in this bylaw discussion would probably translate over into what a charter components would include. So no, I don't think this has been a waste of time. I think it's actually been very constructive, because again, we're talking about this wholesale evolution in either event. But going from bylaw to charter structure, Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Brown?
You can decide kind of your governance piece from there. I think the charter kind of establishes more like a purpose and, and then your size. And then you can choose how you want things to be. So if you're worried about a hierarchical sort of president, vice president, whatever, you have, you still have a board with their equal members. And then you have to choose somebody who basically is in charge of running the meeting. And so usually, you call that the chair, or you call it the mayor. But I mean, the idea is, you're going to have, you're still going to have to figure out, and even if you stuck with bylaws, you want to figure out how to incorporate what you're actually doing, so that you, you know, it's more like getting everybody on the same page, so that people go, yeah, you can't have this meeting. And then you have a document to go, yeah, no, we did what we're supposed to do in order to have this meeting. So it's really the kind of, you have laws or you have rules, no matter what. These guys have guidelines and procedures that you had to come up with about your, you know, how to do your meetings. So you're going to have to have something in order to remedy disputes. And that's sort of how it is when you have a board or you have a hierarchical set of positions, so.
Mr. Brown?
I don't feel strongly about whether we call it a bylaws or a charter. Most of the things we've talked about tonight, I don't know that would change much of that, but I could be persuaded either way.
So, Mr. Lindsay, I'll go to Mr. Sangster.
Sorry, and I guess, I mean, part of this is if this is a moment where the council goes, this is, this is something that, you know, we're trying to change the old ways and, you know, just because we've always been doing something. I mean, there is an opportunity, I guess, to have statements about why people exist. You know what I mean? And actually embrace it for maybe that sort of existence model. So there could be positives there too. But again, I think people want to kind of codify how they're operating or how they want to be operating, and then there, what you can do with them. And so you can always change it. But it's your guys' thing, you know what I mean? I understand that our ordinance calls for bylaws. Maybe you just want to take that out and let them do their thing. I don't know.
Well, I think a lot of the conversation has been under, and what we talked about earlier, that the neighborhood associations are recognized by the city to perform certain functions within our self-governing structure and to be that closer to our neighborhood voice. And that's always been the foundation of that and for the purposes of dispersing funds. Because part of this is that by doing X, Y, and Z, as a functioning association, we're eligible for city funds in order to achieve those goals. So whether that happens within a charter structure or a bylaw structure, I'd be interested in knowing what that looks like. But I think for the short term, because this is going to be, I think, a bigger conversation to come back with, recommendation that we move forward with changes to the ordinance now, please make this big step forward and let's continue the conversation on the evolution from bylaws to charter. I don't think we wait, because we've done a heck of a lot of work to get to this point. Let's make these changes, let's learn from them. If we need to amend again, so be it, it won't be as giant a leap. But I would really recommend that we go ahead and let's move forward with the changes that we've been discussing and to update it so that you can get your bylaws updated as well, as some of them are older than others, some of them are pretty new and fresh and what, behind the ears. But let's go ahead with that. Does anybody disagree with that and then continue the conversation over the next year? What would that change look like to make a wholesale change from a bylaw structure to a charter structure? I'm going to go to Mr. Sangster and then to Mr. Gierloch.
My only, I'm putting on my old state risk manager hat, because I work with a lot of nonprofits and as a state risk manager. And we want to make sure the bylaws and stuff right now kind of protect us, and we don't want to get into a charter situation where we're open for liability and other issues, which I've seen in other nonprofits and charters. So we have to be careful on how we write things. So we have some protection. Otherwise, we're going to have to come back to you and ask for a larger budget to cover the liability insurance and governance insurance.
So-
You're not a nonprofit. You're not a nonprofit.
The state of Oregon, we had a lot of different groups that were nonprofit that we worked with.
You're a nonprofit.
But that's a concern I have, is liability. And we want to make sure as we move ahead, that we don't open up a can of worms on this side. I'm not saying that we shouldn't move ahead and think about it, but-
So what are the considerations in the conversation of bylaws, charter, pro con, whoopie, liability? And that's a fair, fair statement. Mr. Gierloch, and then I think we need to call it because we're all getting a little, well, okay, I won't speak for all of you. I'm hitting my limits.
Well, first of all, I have no idea of how to structure a charter. So that would be a whole new series to deal with, right? The other one is I can't go through and revise all our minutes and go through all that process to revise it again each point during time period now. Can you help? You're making some kind of change?
I don't know. I really, the bylaws, charter, pro and con, that would be a bigger conversation. But for right now, I think the work that we've done tonight really directs for, update for the ordinance to bring it up to this century. And then we can go ahead and make additional changes over the next time period. But I think that we need to move ahead with the changes necessary to make sure that we are operating under the, that we're clear about what we're doing now. Because what we're operating under was written so long ago that you can't be in compliance with it. We can't be in compliance. We are way out of date. So let's bring it up close. Let's not let perfection be in the way of progress. Let's get this moved forward. Unless anybody's got real heartburn about this, let's go ahead with the changes we've been talking about tonight. There's a few things that I want to address later on. None of them are deal breakers for me, but we can continue to work on this as we bring, get the draft back from the city attorney and city manager and this visit, who I've worked very closely with, who will be able to review and bring it to city council for discussion. I'm going to go to Ms. Rich.
I can just say, let's go ahead and adopt what you have up there, except the attendance will be averaged quarterly, and that should be maybe annually. I don't know why there's an average, why you would look at every quarter. We don't meet June, July, August. You run into that, because December, we don't meet. So I don't know that the quarterly part.
That sounds like that doesn't make sense with, with attendance noted, and just leave it at that. Are we good with that? Because we have, the quarterly doesn't make sense. What can we do? Right.
Our council says, notice in the minutes, so we, so-
It's in the minutes, okay. All right. Is there a next point, decision point?
There's just one more before we get to the ones you, things or your, one remaining. And just to add with attendance noted-
Under six?
Under six.
Okay, Mr. Lindsay, would that do the people that I have that are protected, need to give their full name, or can?
No, it's just a number.
A number? The number of people, not their name?
Perfect.
Yeah.
It's just to try to be consistent if we're trying to build a standard floor on attendance, and then we want to make sure that the report had the attendance.
Correct, just a number. But I will, sorry to do this to you, on six, right now, it has annual reports of recognition. It's based on an anniversary date, and there's been discussion about taking it, making it everything due by April 30. Just have it all consistent, so it's done before budget. So when you put your budget request in, we have your annual reports, we have your, everything done, and that's what you've been doing. So we can, again, we won't do this to this year, because we won't have this passed in time, but to make this change for April 30 each year. Anybody find that to be not okay? So it's all consistent. Everybody's good? Good? Woo! Fastest one ever. Okay. And then, one more thing. On section seven, to remove the terms expectations and responsibilities, which is gushy, replace that with requirements for recognition as per section five. So right now, it's not on here, because this is an add from me, but right now, in section seven and eight, it says expectations and responsibilities that are not defined in the ordinance, but section five, which we've just spent all that time in, is where you have to remain in compliance. So if we could just refer to that, make it simple. Does that make sense? And we can come back and say, oh, my gosh, I can't believe you did that, and let's not do that. But to me, this just makes it consistent in the document. Those are my two little adds. Okay? You guys are rock stars. We've gotten a tremendous amount of work done. Thank you so much. Thank you all the neighborhood associations, everybody for hanging in there with us tonight to get this, again, huge step forward. And with that, the time is 8:48. We are adjourned.